In the spring, Woodland Church is doing the beautifying the school project. And that's going to be happening Sunday after prom. So that'll all be happening in the same weekend. For student council, we started a new service project for second semester. Every week on Wednesdays, we're going to help store during our lunch periods and helping out there. I went this past week and what we pretty much did was help just straighten out things, just work out where they needed it because they're very short staffed. On February 25th, the Lincoln High School faculty is sponsoring the Neighbors and Table. And this past Friday on February 7th, 11 students and Mr. Spiegel did the pool of lunch. I did that and it was actually really fun, so.
Fun, okay. Thank you. All right, thanks Emily. Okay, next I would like the minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes from January 13th to 2014. Gregor?
A motion on the second to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of January 13th, 2014. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Okay, next we have comments from citizens and delegations, and I do have one, so I'm just going to read our procedure. Persons who wish to address the Board of Education may make a statement pertaining to a specific agenda item and may be recognized by the Board President to speak regarding issues which are not on the agenda. However, the Board will not take action on items not listed on the agenda. The Board President may establish limits for speakers due to time constraints. Persons wishing to address the Board should sign up to do so with the Board Secretary before the meeting begins. Comments made by the public shall be civil in content and tone. Speakers bear the personal risk if comments made are defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Please keep in mind that this is a meeting of the Board of Education, open to the public, and not a public hearing. And with that, I would like to recognize Brandon Chalmers.
Thank you. I am a parent of the Wisconsin Rapid School District. My children go to my little town school. And I haven't had any problem with the busing system until this year. We were given a new bus driver this year. The other one must have retired or different route. But we, our families have trouble with this route since the beginning of this year. That I have addressed to Ben and Fred throughout the year. And about situations where the bus driver on this route does not stop at our stop. Goes around and when you, where I've had to take the kids to school myself due to time constraincies, or call the bus driver and, or the bus company and they have the dispatch bring her back. And when I ask, "Oh, I forgot." And by this time, there's, you can tell there's no intention of her ever turning back around to pick them up. She has driven, driven past our house without stopping, beeping and stopping if she doesn't immediately. She comes, she didn't see us and we're always outside. And then the final, and this has happened throughout this, at least six times throughout first half of the school year. The final piece was when, last week, I got a call, I'm in Stevens Point. I have a 25-year-old daughter stays home to get the kids off the bus. I'm a UWSP student. And I was in class in Stevens Point and I get a phone call. And my children get off the bus at 10 after 4:00. I get a phone call 20 minutes after going, "Grace or Sophie did not get off the bus. The other two did, the youngest one didn't." They were trying to find the phone number. They finally called me, I called them immediately. They said, "Well, we'll call that dispatch." They called her. Okay, well, they did find it, we're going to bring her back. It was 4:40 by the time they brought her back. This is the youngest of my three children. This bus driver knows there's three children on this bus. So my request was to, due to these infractions that I have been dealing with, that have potentially put my children in harm, put our household in distress at times because we are time constraincies. And I actually have reports saying that, you know, my children have been tardy because of the lateness of her route. That was a third one, is she's consistently late, 10 to 15 minutes throughout this year. I had asked for either her removal on our route, to give us a different bus driver, or place us on a different route. That's been my request. And the answer was that I am loading things out of proportion. I have no merit. And basically, I have been bullied by the Lammers bus system. And so I am pleading for this council to approach them with my minor request because this bus driver is obviously not taking her job as seriously as she should be. And after all the phone calls I've made, it just has not accomplished anything. And as a parent, I do believe I should have some rights and say, when it comes to the safety and wellbeing of the children on that bus. Thank you.
Okay, I'll thank you for your comments. The Board won't be taking any action on this, but I do thank you for your comments.
Um, the last request is if need be, I would like to be put on the agenda for the next meeting if this does not get resolved, please.
And you would have to talk to the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we will go on to committee reports. Business Services. John?
Business Services had a short meeting this month. Have no consent agenda items. The one item we didn't, we did have a purchases update on the lease on services. You see from the city of Wisconsin, also the library software licensing from the product software company, which we all previously approved purchases, so we did updates on those. So with that, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the Business Services Committee, as well as the minutes from the full session of the special Business Services Committee full session on February 3rd.
Okay, we have a motion on the second to approve the regular Business Services Committee meeting minutes of February 3rd, 2014. The special full session committee meeting minutes of February 3rd, 2014. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thanks, John. Next, Personal Services, Sam?
Personal Services met last Monday, February 3rd. And from that meeting, we have five consent agenda items, and they are as follows. The one, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one professional staff early retirement request. Second, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff early retirement request. Third, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff resignation request. Fourth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one professional staff appointment. And fifth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two support staff appointments. I'll second those.
Okay, a motion on the second to approve ES1 through ES5, as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then we had an update on the class size reports. It's very interesting, this year we had the opportunity to look at, for example, the elementary, what our enrollment was last year and what it is this year for class sizes. And when we were in Lincoln, and yet we could look at the three years, including this year. I don't have, I don't know if you have your agenda with there, but there was a couple of things you might, I want to point out for you. If you look at the 2013-14 class size report in elementary. If you look for the Think Academy. If you look for FTEs, that should be a seven and not a six. And therefore, the average class size would go down to 20. And just to clarification, if you look at kindergarten in grade one, you see 1.5, 1.5 FTEs. That's a multi-age configuration there. And if you look at grade two and grade three, and you see the numbers 22 students, this is not in the Sage program. You can forego the Sage program for one year in the upper level classes, and that's what's happened here. Nothing, you know, really jumps out as out of whack. You look at it, they're pretty consistent, we've been able to maintain that. And other than that, if you have any questions concerning it. If we look at the Central City's Health Institute, we can have up to 24 students in there. And we're having, we're down to like 19 this year because it's a two-year program. And some of them after one year deciding, "Well, this just isn't for them." When we first started the program, it was waiting us, so I'm, you know, we need more advertising on it, or the kids just didn't want, have the interest, but it's been kind of fluctuating. And if you have any other concerns concerning the enrollment, you can ask Ryan Christensen, he's the expert on it. Yes?
I have a friend, I remember seeing one of the early grades that need. And I wondered if that's not a place that I could put my elbow. 19 in grade two. Well, it's the average, the average grade. And that's higher than all the rest. That's a pretty difficult place if you happen to have. Unfortunate mix. So I just wanted to see, if we could look at that and see. Oh wait, well, the Think Academy is in grade two. But of all the regular elementaries that were in high, so I just felt that would be someplace to talk to and say, "Is this too much?"
Generally, we meet the Sage numbers by the third Friday and sometimes get to move them about. And so the numbers fluctuate throughout the course of the year.
Maybe that helps. Anyway, I wondered if I could write.
And with that, I move that the minutes from the February 3rd, Personal Services Committee, we approve this meeting.
I'll second that. Okay, a motion on the second to approve the regular Personal Services Committee meeting minutes of February 3rd, 2014. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Sam?
Excuse me, Mrs. Rayle. Did you take a vote on the original consent agenda items? I didn't hear the vote.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll take that one. Thank you. Okay, then we'll take a, see, I haven't done this for a year, can you tell? Was there a motion on the second? There was, okay, there was a motion on the second. Okay, so, can we, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I apologize for that. We've already done the minutes, so do you want to give that? A motion on the second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, Anne.
The Educational Services Committee met also last Monday, February 3rd. We had one public comment. Mr. Jim Scott asked about the actual cost for iPad apps. He also asked when the Board of Education would be considering renewal of the Mead Elementary Charter School contract, and whether or not Mead School was meeting the goals set out in the charter. His final question was about the cost per pupil of the WKCE test. We then went on to actual items, and our first consent agenda item was elementary keyboarding. Kathy Stevens Hints, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, was here to explain the implementation and evaluation of the elementary keyboarding pilot in the first semester of 2013-14. Kathy shared the results of the pilot evaluation, and they were positive, with remaining concerns about lost instructional and computer lab time. Based on the positive pilot results, implementation of a future elementary keyboarding program was discussed. The program will start with all third grade students receiving six weeks of keyboarding instruction for 30 minutes a day, and all fourth and fifth grade students receiving three weeks of instruction for 30 minutes a day. Grade six students will no longer need to receive keyboarding. A certified business education teacher will provide that instruction while the classroom teacher is present. This enables the classroom teacher to provide follow-up and reinforcement. Implementation of the full program for the 2014-15 school year will cost an additional .447 FTE. However, after the 2014-15 school year, the cost will be neutral due to the ability to drop keyboarding at the sixth grade level. And that was our only consent agenda item, so the committee recommends and I move that we accept ES1.
Okay, a motion on the second to approve the implementation ES1 of keyboarding in the elementary schools beginning in the 2014-2015 school year with an additional .447 FTEs for the 2014-2015 school year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, then we went on to updates, and we had an elementary iPad update. Phil Bickelhoff, Director of Technology, provided an update on the implementation of iPads in the elementary buildings. To date, there are a total of 744 iPads in the elementary buildings, including classrooms, special education, and staff iPads. iPads are being used for staff collaboration, Google Drive, reading and math apps, keyboarding, grades four and five technology projects, Renaissance learning products, online blogging, Skyping, FaceTime, hangouts, and various apps related to the curriculum. There have also been several professional development opportunities available to staff surrounding the iPad, including numerous DEU courses, summer tech splash class, summer iPad workshop, and the WRPS technology site. Phil shared that the purchases are coming in under budget because less is being spent on apps than anticipated. So the committee recommends and I move acceptance of the minutes for the February 3rd Educational Services Committee.
Okay, a motion on the second to approve the regular committee meeting minutes of the Educational Services Committee of February 3rd, 2014. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Anne.
And then, Mary, we have, we also have a correction of the January 7th minute. I believe it is just that, under A, under the Lincoln High School schedule study update, we had the wrong date there, the school year. And it should be, it will be beginning the 2015-16 school year. I think it said 14-15.
We don't need to approve that, just because we didn't say, state that at that meeting. We gave a correct date, so.
Okay, it's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, are there any agenda referrals or information requests? Okay, Sam, we'll move on to the legislative agenda. And we had invited Representative Krueg to be here this evening, but he called this afternoon and said that he had a special session in the morning that he needed to attend and prepare for, so that he will not be here tonight. I did have correspondence from Amy Suverly, State Representative. The Board, as you know, is inviting our local, state, and possibly federal ones to come. Attend a board meeting, and State Senator Lassa was here last month. And I talked to Amy Suverly because she had actually sent me some correspondence, so I told her she'd probably be invited to March or April. But I'm going to share just a little bit of what she had written to me concerning why she didn't vote for the 2013-13 biennial budget. I'm going to just highlight the parts about the school, the way she felt. She just states in here that she stands by every vote she takes in the Assembly as a deliberate decision for the best interest of the 70th Assembly District, including her vote against the 2013-15 biennial budget. She joined a bipartisan group of legislators opposing the budget because overall it had the wrong priorities for the hard-working families of her district. And as far as the school issues go, she says, "The budget expands the unaccountable voucher program statewide while continuing the inequitable and inadequate funding of our local public schools, including for successful student achievement programs like Sage, which helps reduce class sizes. The voucher scheme diverts money that could support our public schools to private schools that are not held to the same transparency and accountability as public institutions, that do not have to provide the same level of services to students, and that have not shown any greater student achievement than public schools. I have nothing against an individual's choice to attend a private school, but 73% of voucher students under the statewide expansion already attend a private school, showing that state support to provide access is poor public policy." I did tell her that she would be invited to either our March or April meeting to further discuss the budget and her concerns. I think Representative Krueg will also be invited at a future meeting. So I guess with that, I will move on to the bills.
All right, are we going to discuss those legislative ideas that the audience gets here? Are we going to do, discuss those things, or do we talk about that in the budget?
We might go for a little children's.
We're just wondering, people that are here telling me they're very unpleasant to look at.
We don't have any.
Can't discuss anything that's not on the.
And it wasn't, and it wouldn't, it wasn't a public.
No, it's on the agenda to ask what they're doing down there. Right?
Right.
To me, it's not doing very well. It's going the wrong direction, and it's going further than the direction that started out a number of years ago. And we're asked to do more with less, and smile while we're doing it. So what's the future of that? I think, to the credit of our district and many others, they are smiling, they're doing good work. But it is, it is easy to, they appreciate that. Because work for less is a tough role.
And I do agree, and I think that's why the Board decided to invite our representative each month, that, like I said, they plan on having Mark Sundberg here this evening.
Okay, cool. Talk to him another time.
Okay, yes, who will. All right, the bills.
Okay, then I would like to make a note that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid.
Okay, a motion on the second that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed. We have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Marina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we are now onto new business, under new business. First, we'll have an update and possible action on the 2014-2015 district council reduction. Colleen?
Thank you. When we look at our shortfalls each year, primarily what happens is we look at our health insurance renewal. And we do not have a number yet for that, though they've told us they look at this one February. We cap them at 12, so we're anticipating a 12%. The Affordable Care Act, we've had the indication that they will not put a full, we think it'd be a somewhat around a percent or percent, percent and a half. But they will tack on to our recent, recent renewals. But we take our health insurance, and then we have declining enrollment. And those two numbers together gave us approximately a 2.29 or a shortfall this year. So what I wanted to do is to share with you some of the conversation, well, some of the topic of conversation that we're having in looking at how we might meet that deficit. Some of the things we're looking, and I basically want to note if we're heading in the right direction or if you would have us go in a different direction. Basically, you know, 80%, perhaps a little more of our entire budget is salary and benefits, so certainly we're looking at salary and benefit items. We are anticipating some retirements. And that projects a savings to us when people retire. If somebody retires and you don't have to replace the position, it's a higher savings than if you replace them in position. Over the last several years, we've had some of our special program educators retire and we have none replaced them. They'll see, we see, and everyone else's case.
That's happened. As you say, that's sort of the reason that I said it's sort of blown off at some point. And yeah, to say, "No, you're there." Right? That was interesting. Do you know if that's going to assume?
That will not save money from retirements soon, or as far as kind of.
The number of retirees has been pretty significant the last three years.
It hasn't, it hasn't been huge, Ryan. I don't know if it made, give the numbers, you know, from the last couple of years.
At least, I was there in retirement.
I think we've had, we've probably had nine, 10 retirements. Something like that, I think.
I don't know, I've seen some pretty good, a few people retired that had four years left. That was, that was 10.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I've been happy that.
Well, the last, in the last couple of years, we've had, I don't remember what we had last year, but I think the year before we had probably 10 other people retire. But I agree with John that part of that, this was the 10, the result of 10, we're concerned about the insuredness of what was coming.
Some of them make significant cuts each year, not likely due to this. But this is good. Better than sick, better than dead, better than retired. You wish you got what you got.
Well.
So again, I think it's, I think that's a place.
What happened last year was, we didn't have any retirements, but the governor puts more money into some state aid funding, and that, that's how much it's like. And.
That was done over, that was done this fall.
Yeah.
But we anticipate, we always anticipate some retirements. We never know, you know, how many we've got, so we hope that, you know, if there are some retirements, we save some money there. We're certainly looking at staff cuts and we're looking at all groups of employees. We are leaning some savings from the pitch rental because we're not preventing the snow there, nor are we paying utilities, so there's a savings there. Actually, the first two snow days, when we don't transport children, when we don't make them up, we're getting some savings in transportation there and some salaries. We're also looking at doing a percentage cut across department and building budgets. Now, that's, that's only gotten us part of the way, we're not all the way. I guess what I need to hear from you is, you know, I can't be more specific than that because we haven't really, you know, looked closely enough to say, you know, which staff numbers or which positions, things of that nature. But I guess I'd like to hear from you whether or not that's heading in the right direction. We have not, at this point, got programming, we need to do that. You might be wondering about facilities, but that would not be a suggestion for this time of fall. It would be for following the school year, but going for some savings, going for a facility. And by that, I mean whether or not we close our schools or restructure our kids at all. So we're not looking to put anything there for next year, or even the following. I don't know if we're going to use your statistics.
We, and actually, we do cut programming because we required more students perception for, for offered, before it'll be offered. I think at one time, were we lower 20s or, you know?
It's a, it's better 20. And it's still there.
But we have to have more students in a class before it runs now. So that if we don't have that number, the class doesn't run. And 10 years pass, they used to run, so we do modify our curriculum.
In that regard.
Yeah.
But what we're saying is.
Yeah, but I'm a.
You know, we're not cutting a particular.
No.
Specific offering of works, and just, we're going to cut that, and we're trying to avoid doing that. But yes, you're right.
And especially in our rural languages, we do a lot of combining of the various levels. You know, it's not the greatest, but it's keeping our foreign languages going with all levels.
Well, that is something, you know, we've had conversation about too, is what do we offer at what grade levels? What does the DCA require? So those are all conversations we're also having, and what do we have to offer it, and how do we offer it? But we're trying to, you know, we're trying to stay away from that, but at some point, as Larry is saying, we're going to have to go there because we can't continue to just kind of be a, a, a salary.
And that's the catch 22 that we run into. I mean, we have to document and keep every conference we've been to, and the big push this year at the Schoolwork Convention is STEM. The push from the community foundation is STEM. Push from industry in the area is STEM. But yet they don't want to give us any money to do STEM. So, or have the program to do it, because I attended two very good STEM programs down at the state convention. And basically, they dedicated, they had 30 students in class and they were giving two instructors to that group. This is a brilliant school district, I put it on, and there, we've landed a plan, K-12 STEM programs, starting in kindergarten, STEM, STEM training, teaching, and that type of format, which is, it's kind of like following the common core standards. And we do a lot of the group organizing that they need to introduce, they went to board outside the box thinking, rather than just sitting doing 25 problems. We're giving them a hands-on experience, whether they're doing the problem or maybe they don't figure out what they're doing. Which is neat, funny, to do that, and you need to have instructors. Which is neat, funny, to do that, and you need to have instructors to do that, and you do actually need, they have a core of two instructors to do that, to be successful. And it's usually for two different content areas, so we keep getting the mandates, and everybody from the state and the business community wants us to do the STEM programming, but again, we have to turn around. We don't have a funding source, we don't, we have to have funding. And the other frustrating thing is, is we talk to legislators, whether it's Republican or Democrat, they all say the funding formula is broken. One of the leaders has talked about it for five years now, that he's been down there and he's, he's offered some plans. There were some positive thoughts that they are looking at it, but that's the biggest frustration, is that both sides of the aisle say the funding formula is broken, but nobody wants to stick their toe in the water, or punch, and do anything about it. And that's the frustrating part is, is that education, they keep saying public education is broken. You know, it's not necessarily public education is broken, funding is broken, but as far as providing school districts the tools that we need to educate our children, it's not, they, they talk, one side say, yeah, we're going to be doing that, Governor Walker, and eventually said that, but then it goes out, it goes out the door, and the convention goes down to the Capitol, and all of a sudden, you send, there's no action, nothing's been done. So, the frustrating part from, from anybody in education is the fact that funding is naked effects. In Jerry's case, $2 million budget, I'm not really bad, I took five million this year to look, I mean, the costs, and every large area has a big, I just said, reduction will be a bit fine in the long. And you've got to fix the formula, and every time you turn around, it's not taking money away from a group that for the last 25 years has been on a decrease of 2-3 percent a year, more or less, and in any whole private business, that business is made from. And we keep talking about how private industry works and that they're going to run, run school districts by private industry, well, then, funding's got to be there, or you haven't had the ability to make funding in order to run it. And private industries, right now, how they get into funding, they see these private charter schools, they're taking it, public funding, they're trying to start their schools. So, the catch 22 is if they can public funding, but they have no looks or accountability, we're naked at it. And actually, now public taxpayers are funding religious schools. That between a Lutheran and any other religious school out there, this is being funded by public power.
John, can you just put the public knowledge down, stands for just those that are possibly as I've been talking to?
It's science, technology, engineering, and math, and actually, now they're trying to make it, add arts in there too, called STEAM. And so, the, but the core group of it is, is teaching the forecommon, what, what most industries say people are lacking, is design, technology, engineering, and math backgrounds into job markets.
And similarly said, this is 10 years ago, I was down at the legislator's place, and I said, you know, healthcare costs have gone up double or triple the equation rate for the last 20 years. Can't you do something about that? What's wrong with this picture? I mean, if, if, if that can go up triple the rate of inflation or double the rate of inflation every year, and I fail, there should be some way to do some sort sort of fixing. Or just say, it doesn't go up more than one and a half times the rate of inflation, then maybe, maybe some savings there, but there, but that doesn't seem to be getting done. So, it's frustrating, but we're expecting to come up with more and more of the help programs. Anyway, I get frustrated when I see, and here I am, oh, again, commercials for healthcare people on the Super Bowl channels. What? Well, it doesn't help me at all for you to put that commercial on. Spend that money on healthcare. I wish you could do it. I'll stomp my feet when I hear that.
So, given, given the, the items that I've talked to you about, are there, are there other places you'd rather have this?
Oh, I'm the place that I like to live in. One lot's age.
If, when we, when we look, we look at Sage every year, and we will look at it again in the past, last year it would have added 100,000 to our deficit, at least, to cut it, because the state funds it, so we're heavily, so we would have added some deficit.
It's a wonderful idea. You get things done early, in early grades, and you're successful, it knocks on a long, long time, so the idea is a good one.
Well, as long as the state is funding it, it's, you know, I think we lose money if we're on to it.
Right. But we look at that every year, so I'll...
Don't say I said.
Okay.
Any other ideas?
I was the one that encouraged that a lot, that, you know.
But it's something we look at every year. Sorry.
Don't, that's, I just wanted the board to think of other ways, places they want to look, or I guess just continue on, and we don't, do we need a motion to...
We could do that, we could do that, Bill, so if there's, we're heading in the right direction, that we continue to...
I mean, what other, other sources we would have is...
Teacher.
Buildings. And all that really isn't directly related to retirement now, as far as, as far as the budget, because that's based on what you're retiring, it's your office staff. So, it's something that we'll have to look at. Those are the three things that, those are basically the only two things we're looking at. Rest of it, exactly. They're, they're thinking about it. It's the last option in the world, and you have to, that's, that's a, that's a way to get revenue, that's a, that's a, just bring up the same thing, you have to have a source of finding revenue, and that's...
It's a matter of whether or not the, the, this will go down in the, in the, or some law there.
The, the success is definitely...
So... I have the management issue, the administration continuing to implement the FAB, where that is, was considering the cost of the staff.
I have a second.
Okay, motion on the second, demonstration continuing, and the fact that they are protected and fairness updates is...
And we look back, it's forward to your board, decision making.
Okay, motion on second, all votes in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion third, thank you. Okay, next, we have discussion and possible action regarding retirement benefits for professional staff.
Yes, so speaking of OPEB, we've had some conversation about, we have a new term in place, as you know, and for active employees, the HRA covers part, a portion of the deductible for active employees. It also does that for professional staff retirees. And we're having some conversation about whether or not we should allow people this year, who are going to retire, to retire as they would, but then next year, put in place the idea that when somebody retires, they then become responsible fully for the deductibles. So, in other words, we have $2,000, $4,000 deductible, and the HRA covers, and also employees pay 300, 600. If we would make this change, the retiree then would be responsible for the full $2,000 and the deductible goes up. So, two days there. But we're, if I have this, I'm going to use retirees, but give people a chance to know that it would be for families for... That's, that's my idea that we've talked about, and I don't know if I, Dan, have anything to add today.
Sorry. Well, you might hear you.
What, the whole thing?
Well, I said, can't catch them bits and pieces, but I heard the history.
Um, we've looked, we've looked at OPEB, and currently, employers have a $2,000, $4,000 deductible, and active employees as well as retirees pay 300, 600 based on the HRA kicking in. So, the conversation has become, if, once someone retires, they should be responsible for the full deductible, the $2,000, $4,000, versus having the HRA cover that, and that that really maybe only covers active employees. That's all I'll say.
Thank you.
Sure. And then, Ryan and Dan, do you have anything to add to that, or is it...
I would add that this topic has come up in conjunction with some of the other pieces that we've talked about as we've been reviewing the budget and trying to look for cuts, you know? One of them ties into the fact that insurance overall, there are a variety of different potential design changes that we're taking a look at. We're hoping by this time next week, we'll have some sort of, at least a rough number on what the renewal rate increase is, is going to look like. Right now, we're, we're projecting and planning for the worst-case scenario, which is the 12 percent that, that can be referred to, plus the 1.5 percent on top of that, which would be the add-on for administrative costs that come along with the, with the Affordable Care Act.
And we'll likely have a 12, because our utilization is so high.
And that's the other important piece is, our, our loss ratio is high, and one of the reasons it's high is because we've got a very good deal going right now, and it's important to emphasize that. As we've reviewed our utilization, obviously, we have a high loss ratio, which means WEA Trust is losing money on our, on our plan right now with the district. The reason that is the case is because we're getting such a good deal. We review our, our utilization and our premiums in comparison to other districts, our size and rate of the area, like Marshfield and Stevens Point, we're paying less than they are right now because we've negotiated very good deals the last couple of years, but now it's catching up with us. And that's why we would anticipate that they're going to ask for the, the full capped amount at the 12 percent. Do we, will that happen? We don't know if it's going to be that way for sure, we should know in about a week.
But another way to reduce the deficit then is to make permanent changes, and that can be substantial. For every percent we can get it to go down, it's about 1,000.
So, we...
We're still looking for approximately 600,000, even with some of these items that I've talked about.
Nice question to what we're asking.
We're still looking for about 600,000. I mean, if we go through some of these things that I shared with you, we're still shy at that moment.
Along, along with that, as far as, there are other concepts out there that, I went through a couple of, there are workshops at the convention, one of them was, you know, the, 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 the,
I think there are savings to be, to be made in wellness, that's done a certain way, in a way, tone of voice, but I had an argument with my insurance carrier the other day, and was then for checkup, "Does anyone want this vaccine?" And I said, "If that's tetanus and diphtheria." "Oh, fine, hopefully, that's going to recover." Because I got home, two weeks later, three weeks later, I get the bill, it's ninety-two dollars for the shock, and forty-two dollars to have the minister, and I could have got down to Walgreens and got it for seventy-two dollars. I said, "Don't you want me to get better?" He said, "Well, if you got tetanus, would you cover me?" "Yeah." "Yep, if you got tetanus, we'd take you, take you, get you better." "And what about diphtheria?" "Yeah, I'd fix, we'd fix that, but you won't pay for the, won't pay for the vaccine." I said, "Well, you got a sickness care system rather than a health care system, you know, encourage people that want to prevent." Same with machines, and other stuff. They do pay for pneumonia vaccine, which I think everybody's got, because you wouldn't want that either, because it's a serious thing that happens, you can get out of it, but part of it, we should all agree, but there's a lot of reform that needs to be done, but I, I really think there are benefits to wellness, and I think we've studied this long enough in our district to know what our problems are, and what we need to help people with, and hopefully we can do something, with cooperation with our healthcare provider. Definitely, if it works out, everyone should take, get as much as they can out of that, because it's a good direction.
Talking about, you know, maintaining wellness or health, I know a lot of insurance companies, and I don't know if WEA does or not, but they'll reimburse like a hundred and fifty dollars per year if you, if you belong to a gym, to maintain wellness, so that is something that, you know, WEA has or doesn't have, it could look at, it could help on the wellness.
Yes, there's pressure.
So, we don't know if you want to take the action on, on a particular health retirement benefit, see, it would be, again, the HRA portion, the deductibles would be fully paid by retirees, that would affect, that would affect retirees going forward, following this year.
The second thing I could just mention as well, is that this obviously ties into our doing, our staffing. If you, if we follow directly the wording in the, in the professional staff employee handbook, the deadline for requesting early retirement is Friday, February 20th, it's Friday at the end of this month. How many people retire versus do not, obviously impacts our staffing, if we have staffing reductions, and we don't have as many retirements, then we're looking at non-renewals. We're on a timeline, a statutory timeline for that non-renewal process, and that's why, you know, as the administrative team has discussed this, feel that those that are contemplating retirement need to know what they're taking a look at, so that they can make a decision. We had also talked about if, if some sort of action is going to be taken tonight to perhaps look at pushing that deadline back to provide some additional time, perhaps March 28th as opposed to February 28th, to offer some more time, depending upon if action is taken for those contemplating retirement to make a decision, because that would still give us enough time within that statutory timeline requirement for non-renewals, if we still have to do non-renewals beyond the, the staff retirements, that, that would occur.
So if they waited to take action on this proposal till March, would that still be enough time? I mean, people contemplating retirement know that it's out, you know, we can let them know that this is a discussion, it's out there, the board will take action, one way or the other, in March, would that still be enough?
Yeah, it condenses our time on doing staffing, a bit.
Well, it's a part of our budget, it's a part of the budget. I mean, it's, we're looking at it because we're looking at, we're starting to look at all kinds of ways in which that can help the budget, rather than, because we're going to get to a point where we can't large class sizes anymore, unless you're going to tell us not to offer anything other than the district, or what the DGA tells us we have to offer. You know, we want to, we want to have a good program available to students, but that means that we're going to have to start looking at the obvious, and, you know, we think we've, but, well, that staff and the benefits, you know, we're curious, I mean, how much, what do you do there?
Do we have, I mean, I have so many numbers, what is, do we have numbers, or what's necessary?
The HRA, I think, Dan, did you project about fifteen thousand the first year?
Right.
Depends on the number of retirees, so really...
Yeah, if, if, I, I think a retiree has, I think, thirty, four hundred dollars, or six hundred, yeah, six hundred, right now it's six hundred dollars per family.
Per family.
Right, so it'd be, it'd be the number of retirees times thirty, four hundred dollars.
Which is the difference between six hundred and four thousand.
Well, it's a single, it's a single, it'd be times seventeen hundred dollars, and based on the number, that, that's on the cap, I think.
And the conversation I have is, you know, a couple of issues. One is, it could incent people to retire, it could disincent people to retire, and frankly, I don't want us pushing people out the door, and having people retiring weren't ready to retire, I think people need to retire when they're ready, but people are already asking me, so, I'm kind of, kind of like, "What do you mean?" You know, "I'm not ready to get pushed out yet." But it's, you know, if you want good people to stay and, and continue working, but we're looking at it from a purely, you know, budgetary, and it's, it's one idea that we have, but...
I guess I would like to say personally, I'm going to wait, I'd like to extend this to March 28th, find out what our original rate is, and see how bad we turn off, or we... Well, I know, but, but you don't know, because I know...
So push the, push the retirement out to...
I'd say push, right now I'd make a motion to, or I'll make a motion to push the retirement out to March 28th, to give us, I guess I'd just would like to see the numbers on paper, and what we're talking about, because I haven't seen...
Health insurance.
Yes.
We have...
I haven't seen that, between the health insurance and then what, what this will actually save us, I'd like to see a, a chart saying if five retired, ten retired, fifteen retired, what this is going to save us, so we have a dollar number to tie to it, to see where we're, where we're, the value is.
I'll say the motion.
Just a quick, I have a question, like, I was talking about budget and cuts and things, we have to take care of our teachers, very, you know, retirees, and they're important to the wellbeing of our children. Has anybody considered the budget for transportation possibly getting altered?
I was about to ask that earlier, and I think we looked at a number of them.
Because, you know, I, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're basically of a monopolization, and they pretty well dictated us, and I think
it might be time to turn this around. I mean, especially now with their infractions they've been doing, I, I forgot to mention that I have got DOT things that they've bypassed, because, you know, they're starting to slack in, in many areas, and if they're going to slack, we might be able to negotiate different costs regarding that, too.
Excuse me, but, but we're, this is just a board meeting, so we're supposed to be discussing once the board, I appreciate your comments, but...
Good idea.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
So the motion is...
So there was the motion in the second, okay, to move the retirement from February 28th to March 28th, so we're discussing on that.
For what?
Yep, I got a motion in the second. Okay, all was in favor of moving the date from February 28th to March 28th for putting up for retirement, say aye.
Aye.
All was in favor of the motion, please.
None?
That was like John...
Pardon?
Because also like John involved in the conversation here, so we have a full board on that decision.
On the HRA.
Yes.
So we'll take one more.
Yes.
One of the details I could comment is, by that point in time, hopefully we'll have a better idea on what sort of design changes we may be looking at for active employees as well, to give a little better comparison, because if we do come back with that full renewal of twelve percent that, that we're anticipating may occur, we're going to have to have some design changes to bring up...
And that's why I want to do it again, that's why, that's why...
It's going to be thirteen and a half, yeah.
I'd like to know what it is, make sure what it is, and then if we're making that change then, okay, and then let's make a change for everything, all at once. I think it makes more sense, by those two little pieces. And I'd like to add a couple of...
Is there anything else in there?
That's all, that's all I have.
Right. Or any other comments? Okay, with that, the calendar request.
There's a question about the calendar, I have correspondence from WREA to negotiate, and my question, do we ever use the meetings that we had last time, and if so, should we just call you as committee members for dates?
I agree with you.
Turned it this way. Coming to John here, Mr. Will. So Will? Okay, so we'll get touch with him.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, was that word, John? Oh, same, yeah.
I just, oh, this last issue of the American School Board Journal, we keep hearing about on TV how schools are failing, and da-da-da-da-da. There is an article by Jim Hill, Jim Paul, it's the high school achievement paradox, numbers don't lie, but they don't always tell the whole truth. It's just a two-page read, but schools are doing wonderfully when you think, they're talking about the demographics and things like this, and the amount of, you know, students. You gotta read it, because it's putting a whole new light on this mantra that we keep hearing.
Is that this month?
It's this month.
Yeah, it's February.
Okay.
But it's just very interesting.
Most people give a good grade to their local school, and they don't give a good grade to others, and no one can look at this stuff.
All right, thank you. Yes, we get it.